Mark?
Here.
Erica?
Here.
Jeremy is absent. Is he coming later?
I think he might have just pulled up.
Okay. Uh, Mark, or Mike?
Mike.
Mike. MC is absent for the day. Is he coming?
I don't know.
And?
Oh, there he is. He's walking in too. And I'm here.
Okay. So everybody is here, but not here yet.
And Jeremy might not have pulled up, I think.
Okay, it would only for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious, God, we thank you for this day that you've been with us. We pray, Lord, that you be with everyone here. That this business tonight is conducted in a manner that will bring you honor. Please, if you forgive us where we fail, then Christ will heal us.
First item on the agenda is... Approval of the October twenty-third, twenty-eighth, there's... Uh, council agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion, and JJ, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like a sign. Next item is September twenty-third, twenty, twenty-five minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended version?
I'll move to approve. Amended version.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, as your city clerk, it's not your authority to change my minutes.
Uh, I'm, your proportion, not okay.
I understand.
The, got a motion and a second to amend and are to approve the amended. Now, the court's open for discussion. And the, we had a question as to whether or not the item five in here was approved. It is, it, uh, we want to go ahead and have a show of hands of those that voted yes on the amended agenda. Show of hands on those that voted yes. That's four. That approves the agenda. So that's stated, that's the only amendment.
It doesn't work that way, no.
Yes, it does.
No, sir, it does not. I'm sorry. But you are incorrect. But as the city clerk, I have already completed these minutes. And now I have to go back and add this to this minute. So I have to be able to show that there's a history on why we voted just now, to show a history on why it, 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 you have to show that transparency. I understand. I'm not changing my minutes, and you don't have the ability to change my minutes as the city clerk.
I'd like a legal opinion.
I have gotten legal opinion from the municipal. I've already done that.
That's fine. I'd like a legal opinion from our attorney.
Mayor, the council is asked to approve the minutes at every meeting. Oftentimes, they make amendments or adjustments to them. Uh, and so this was done to correct, uh, the minutes. I see no problem with it. I think the council can vote to amend or to change the minutes.
They need to vote.
Amendment to the, uh, minutes, or the amended minutes were approved.
They need to vote to strike those minutes, then? That's the only way that these minutes can be changed. They need to strike that comment from there, and they need to vote that they are striking those comments. That's the only way that the minute can be changed, because we've already had a history on our minutes from before. Then he brought it up at the work session. So then I got something on the work session, and now he's brought it up at this council meeting. So to be able to show transparency and a history of why this has happened this way, they have to show up in the minutes.
Mayor, my opinion's not changed. Uh, the minutes have not been approved until the council just did some, and so those are now the official minutes of the proceedings. So the October, that's good, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm not changing them. I was for.
I, please, for your, 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 uh, those are the amendments of the proceedings. And so now you can go on to the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes as well.
Okay. The October fourteen, twenty-five minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the amended version of those.
I'll move to approve the amended version.
Got a motion for Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion for Mark and a second from, uh, Erica. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
These minutes will not be changed either.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Before we go further, what changes are, I mean, what's amendment on it? So let's just give.
Okay, on the, on these, there is a partial transcript rather than minutes. And the, uh...
Mayor?
Yes?
If I can, on the first item, uh, of the, uh, uh, of the minutes that, as they were presented, that's for resolution to authorize and order payment, uh, further back to IRS people to pass payments. Uh, there are some statements here, uh, that I think, uh, are designed to capture a part of the discussion that was occurring. Uh, I think that's, uh, some editorializing, and I think on the, uh, script from the, uh, from the minutes, I think it's complete. Uh, there was a, there was a discussion about, uh, what some of the parts of the, uh, of the IRS transcripts that were received, or the IRS statement of the statement. Uh, uh, Mark Williams had, uh, a statement, uh, I think it was some confusion about what some parts of that meant. Mark Williams, uh, uh, had brought some clarity to that. Uh, that's not included, so I think this is partial. Uh, your minutes in the past reflect, uh, uh, the, uh, you know, who made the motion, who seconded the motion. Uh, you know, what, what the vote was, to be my recognition, that we do the same here, because I don't think this has been accurate by portrayal of the discussion that, that occurred on the topic.
Further discussion?
It also states in the bottom of the minutes, in the bottom of the page, it says, "Minutes are not related to transcriptions of the proceedings." It says that on every single one of my minutes as well. So.
All in favor, say aye.
One minute, one minute.
Okay.
So, we're approving the original?
So there is a, um, there's one one that's an original, and there's one one that is, um, uh, a, that doesn't have that highlighted paragraph, uh, and it just has the vote, the, you know, who made the motion, who made the second, in, in the vote count for that particular line. And it doesn't include the, the statements that are included.
The amended one was the one with us.
So why? Yeah, so why we don't want a paragraph in there?
Uh, for one thing, it's not accurate. Uh, for another thing, I think it's editorializing. Uh, so the paragraph that's in there is not an accurate account of the, of, of, of that discussion. There was more of that discussion that occurred. I just mentioned that Mark, uh, uh, had some statements, and I regard to correct what, what the confusion was, and that's not included.
Yeah, I have that mark, but I can add.
Yeah. And so rather than have a partial account of the discussion, I think it's best just to have a discussion with him.
Well, why can't we add the rest of the discussion?
I mean, uh...
That if we have a whole thing, you don't?
You, you, you could. The whole discussion would have to be transcribed. There is a, uh, uh, there's an audio recording of minutes of anybody at the meeting. So anybody that watches the meeting can, can hear it for themselves. Uh, but I think having a, uh, kind of a partial account is not something that you want to have in your minutes on this particular issue.
But, you know, I, I don't want to have a partial, but if that would resolve the issue, I have the voting, because I know clearly Mark corrected me on that issue.
I, um, I'm sorry, I can say, we can.
Yes.
Uh, one thing is, if we, in our packet, which would be included, right, these are all our items saved, is the IRS's actual statement. So we have never done a, an account like this that I can call in our minutes, ever. So the precedent has been set that we do it like it's been done. And if the IRS statement is included, what I don't understand what the issue is, because this isn't what we typically do. That is my thoughts. What we typically do is the amended version, and that's what we typically do, no matter what, no matter what it is, that's what we do. So I don't know why we would put a, an extra paragraph and an explanation when clearly the IRS statement is there.
You're welcome to pull our, our minutes from previous meetings, and we have done this in the past, Ms. Erica.
I'm not saying it happens all the time. I'm saying that typically, it's like what it is on these minutes. A blurb that says, "This person passed it," or "This person, um, approved it, this person seconded," and it went on.
And the reason that I made that statement to put in here is because on the resolution, it says for twenty twenty-four, but on the paperwork that was provided, it says also for twenty twenty-five. So that's what those are for.
Well, also, it isn't that the interest that was accrued for twenty twenty-five, so that's not the actual statement from twenty twenty-five.
But that's at the back of the paperwork that was provided to the council in that packet said twenty twenty-five.
But that was on the interest, so we owe a bill from twenty twenty-five.
That's what it said, is interest.
Interest on the notice.
Twenty twenty-four.
On twenty-four.
From twenty twenty-four.
The deficiency from first quarter in twenty-four. It's what that interest was on.
Hang on, please, Mayor. Let her finish. Thank you.
You're done. You're not controlling the meeting.
I know, I'm trying to figure out.
You're trying to, yes.
I'm trying to figure out as a clerk, so we can get this resolved.
That's right.
Thank you.
So that's interest from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, but on twenty twenty-four bill. So if you don't pay a bill on time, we accrue interest, right? And so it, it, it's not a twenty twenty-five bill. It's a twenty twenty-four bill, correct?
Correct. But the invoice that was provided in our council packet showed that that was twenty twenty-five.
Because it was the statement date. The statement date said, I remember clearly, October sixth, that the statement date came out. Of course, interest is going to accrue on a bill that's not paid from twenty twenty-four. But it's a bill from twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
That's my statement.
And the interest occurred in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-five. So if we don't pay a bill on time, we accrue interest in twenty twenty-five. It's a twenty twenty-four bill. That's all I'm saying, is that if you don't pay a bill on time, we, we accrue interest as it passes. Right now, we're in a new year, so the interest is there. It's not a twenty twenty-five bill. It's a twenty twenty-four bill that has accrued interest in twenty twenty-five. So I still view it as a twenty twenty-four bill. It's just that we're late on paying, and therefore, interest accrued in twenty twenty-five. That's how, but if that is included, I don't see, and, and I, I don't recall every, everything you do. I'm sure you've broken it down before, but most of the time, it says this. So I don't agree with, with this, is what I'm saying. And it's because it's a twenty twenty-four bill that accrued interest in twenty twenty-five, with the statement date of October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Now that I understand why she wanted to put this in, and your explanation of why two thousand twenty-four the interest paid was, and yeah, once there was a backup, I could now, okay, because most of the, uh, the rest of them are, there's no explanation, yes or no, and who was it, so.
So you're saying you're okay with the amended version? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
I think that, that, I think, do you know, I should discuss it with you.
I will, so. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. And that's a pass. Next item on the agenda is the financial reports. Uh, entertain a motion to accept the, uh, financial reports for water and sewer.
So.
Got a motion by Erica. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by JJ. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like a sign. And that's good. Uh, I saw Carl just walk in, uh, one of the financials for the general fund, or the city financials. Uh, I mean, Carl's working on getting those, uh, prepared, and we, last time we talked about it, uh, he was saying we should have a corrected version by the first fifteenth, or by December. So I'm going to ask if we table them again this month.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Some. About, I'm sorry.
Let's do it in the motion.
So we can discuss this. So, yeah.
Got a motion by JJ. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. And that's discussion.
So can we get this done later past, maybe on December, but it's been a few months. We haven't added, we table, and we table. I'm ready to see some results here. Honestly, can we have that sooner than December? Because it's, we've been tabling this financial.
We need it. I, we will have financials by December. I cannot promise you that they will be absolutely perfect. There's a lot of work to do, especially now. A lot of work. That's, doing the truth, that's the truth.
So we might have it by December.
I will have financials for you by December. I can't, I am not going to stand here and tell you that everything will be exactly balanced, will all be exactly what they should be. There's, there is a lot of stuff to go through, reconcile, to get to the right number, to the number that, that, that needs to be on the voucher. Because you've got, you've got regular liability vouchers. It doesn't work. That means that, that means that the people that usually say you have a liability to actually owe you, since you caused it. So, there's a lot of work to do. I mean, you want, if you want, if you want Peter to run through it and do a half, you know, a job, I can do that, or else we don't do it right.
I'm not asking you to do that, so no, don't take it personal. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just, I'm just hoping we can get these numbers sooner, because the city's financial keep being postponed, postponed on table, and I'm just, like, wasting more time, like, wasting more time, that's.
I have financials for you. Okay, I'm glad.
Okay, I mean, that's my question and answer.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Those are tabled. Next item on the agenda is the department reports. Uh, Fire Department.
Um, today we can get a, a, a high prevention meeting, so I, we, we have seven hundred and sixty kids. There's time for it, and it's going out in the park, and, and under section, so, doesn't want kids in, out to town. That's good, successful, uh, for master, starting with all the budget.
I'll rather repair.
I'm sure. We're making some progress. So, I wish I had better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Police Chief.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Chief. It's, uh, business as usual. Uh, I was off there for a couple of weeks, and I had a little health, uh, issue that I had to procedure done. Um, whether you guys knew this or not, apparently, there was one day while I was out that our vehicles had been grounded, um, insurance hadn't been paid. Not sure if you guys are aware of that or not, but, uh, I just want you guys to be aware of it. I got a phone call while I was sitting at home, that, uh, we had to interrupt all of our police officers to stay at the police department until the insurance was paid. Um, Fire Chief can talk more about that, uh, because he was here, and apparently, he ran down the phone rock and repaid it. But, uh, from my understanding, we had operated about a month and a half, two months with no vehicle insurance, uh, which is against the law, for one. Two, uh, we set ourselves up for a lawsuit waiting to happen. So, um, but that's why, like, that happened when I was away. So, um, but other than that, we backed up, and now the insurance were good. Um, as soon as that happened, and like I said, the Fire Chief can talk more about it, if you guys have questions about that. I, I didn't speak with the municipal, I did not have any conversation with them whatsoever. Again, I was out, um, dealing with a medical deal.
When was it due?
That was in September, when, uh, that happened. Do you remember the day? Uh, I'll let Gary talk a little bit more about that.
Uh, so, our, our insurance card expires at the end of the sixteenth, I believe. Uh, while he was gone, I seen we, we didn't have a big card. So I went over to City Hall, and talked to Keith and some other departments over there, and they didn't do it, so we started firing against the league, and then now we would expire. And so the mayor had a check, and I remember checking out, and the next day, he just got a little, so.
So who's, Mr. Mayor, who's supposed to pay those?
That was actually the, bills came in June. They were supposed to be paid by June first, and it got cut off on the nineteenth of July, I mean, July first. It got cut off the nineteenth of July, just when, because they cut a second, or sent a second notice that after the first, or, right around the middle of July. And so that was, that was before we got Carl or anyone else in finance.
Well, still, you didn't answer my question, and I said, who?
It was when, it was when we still had our clerk.
I've actually spoke to the municipal league on that. Uh, they did an update to, it's called the software hall Orgami. So when they did an update to the Orgami, they, for the last previous years, all of our mail was going to the P O Box thirty-six. So when they did the update to the Orgami, it sent it to P, uh, to one thirty-four North Main. We don't get mail at one thirty-four North Main. And the post office did not send our mail from one thirty-four North Main and put it into our P O box. They send it back. So we weren't getting any mail from that one thirty-four mailing address, is what the, the ladies from municipal league was telling me. And so Ms. Sheila at municipal league is trying to try to figure out what had happened, and why the address transferred from one thirty-four, or from the P O Box thirty-six to the one thirty-four North Main.
Who's one thirty-four North Main?
That's our physical address, but we don't have.
I know, I'm listening, why would we?
Because we don't receive mail there. We have no mail box. The post office doesn't deliver it there.
So. That's really not good. I mean, I, honestly, I'm not, I'm not happy with that. And I don't know how we can, I mean, what can we do to make sure that doesn't happen again? That's...
I think we've had, I think we've got it all fixed now.
How?
I've worked with municipal league and the city guys, and I think, you know, I have it on my, on my computer also, that they, they insurance is due this day, so I don't want to catch it. And so I'm figuring that out. I'm tracking it now, you know, it was pretty, I thought other people were tracking it, but I'm more aware of it now. And I think the police chief is tracking it also. Shouldn't have our week.
Fine, I said, add our week. It's being tracked. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is planning commission report.
Good evening. Plan commission, I had last week, um, just had a couple of items on the agenda. One is the appeal for the tank wall movement. This was up in the, uh, uh, newly annexed subvention, we had a permit come in for retained wall. Neighbor had appealed the commensurate decision of approval. It was processed, it goes, you know, into the approval of it, but planning commission is the, under the court of justice, we reset that, V C A. They are the, um, group that decides the people's, like, outside. They build the commensurate decision to approve visibility. And then we have preliminary flat controlling subdivision. Um, this is the one that we've been working on, out of our block of the wall. Everything's still going to move, and they just wanted to look at reworking some of their sewer lines for maintenance services and better module, which is competitive. So they have got a new, um, plan to us, and Drew's been looking at it, you know, and all others at the M C D. And they're going to come back, this is going to be a collaboration, they'll probably come back to us, and, um, the work session, and they'll ever, we'll get at this and stuff. Uh, that being said, we're probably, uh, postponing the planning commission meeting for next week, if we don't have any action. So the only other things that is on there is the other stuff we've already looked at, that you had before y'all tonight, the, uh, resuming of the property on Fort Lane. We'll talk about that. If you have any questions, we can talk about that later, once we get to it. And then, you know, the general updates, the general updates have a little change since the last meeting. We're still working on the, uh, legacy project, hoping that is accepted, and we'll report with that for next year's scheme of comments in conjunction with the water sharing. And of course, it's something I did not, um, general updates, I got this, maybe three, or maybe two, if any work on this, I mean, I want to say, middle of next week, you know, November fifth, so, we're also still working on that. Let's just ask specific questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the water and sewer department.
Good morning. Um, so to start with, the water and water quarters, um, we've got a lot of meters to set in the woods, in the press, um, finding one that we know of, which is a leaky fire hydrant. That's scheduled to be repaired on Sunday. We were waiting on parts for a few weeks, because it was under hydrant. Um, and then we have a water tap set at the lower third level. Looking at the water loss report, you can see it jumped from thirty-seven to fifty-four. Uh, I believe the reason for that is when we tightened up the alley tree, the gallon line that was leaking about two and a half, twenty gallons a month, it increased the pressure in the line and then created leaks elsewhere. To address this, I went into our A M Z G I X map and found the remaining gallonize that we know of. And so we are working on a game plan to get all that abandoned. We just abandoned another four hundred foot stretch of that on route road. Um, but as of right now, there's an estimated twenty-seven hundred feet of galvanized in the ground, so, based on that map, there, there's, might be a merit that we don't know of. And about six hundred feet of unknown pipe. So there's, we don't know the composition of the pipe that could be galvanized, could be the old quality that this brought up at this point. So that is the game plan, um, so, any questions?
Well, we discussed that, like, the last night and this morning. Regarding the water loss, there was some recommendation on previously when they did the, when they did the, and locating the, you know, water loss. There was, I think there was a huge recommendation in there.
Yes.
So what are those recommendations, and what do we act on those?
Yes, so with the chemicry study, as much as they came out with you, and located our system, uh, listening for leaks, uh, using an acoustic device. Their recommendations, they had about seven. Um, we are currently doing five of those recommendations. The two that we are not doing are, we're working towards one. Uh, one named, it was also suggested that during the investigation, a high quantity of leakage could potentially be carrying in particular communities due to excessive pressure. And so they recommended that we install P R Vs or other pressure management solutions. That is being worked into with the water loss complaint. They're going to tell us strategic points to put area values, pressure levels, provide some relief for, for outpipes. The other recommendation is, uh, district meter areas or data-driven solutions. So a district meter area would basically, you know, you'd install meters in strategic locations on your system, and then, so take Brentwood, for example, you've got a loop system, you install a meter at the entrance of that high line forward, Brentwood. And then you take the difference between the usage of the residential meters and the water. And then you take the difference between the usage of the residential meters and the water that's coming in to the system and compare that difference in that, so you do the water loss in that area of the distribution system.
Can I ask you a question about that? So now that these new developments going up, is that going to be a requirement for them to put that stuff in on the front end? Like Hillcrest and then the one on Rainbow, Dr. Bierce's old property, is that something that can be typed into that?
Right now, it's not in our specs to require developers to do that. It's certainly something to discuss if we'd like.
Add to that, as, as the water master plan gets completed, we're going to find the higher pressure areas which are going to follow the lower elevation for the city. So once that master plan actually outlines that, it'll look like, it'll look at that in a tablet as development takes place. And so that can be a requirement for those specific subdivisions. And it'll depend on each specific subdivision that comes in and the specific location they're locating.
So the new ones that aren't yet currently, like Hillcrest would be out for that because they're currently under development. But the other ones are, can the city put it on the front end before home stop, pop them off and use them water in sewer?
Part of that recommendation was, or the second part was data-driven solutions. So for example, Rogers has sixteen hundred pressure sensors throughout their system. You know, if you have a sensor here, a sensor here, if there's a discrepancy between those sensors, it kind of pinpoints where they need to be looking for a leak. So they use correlation to find, you know, it's this far from this sensor to this far from this sensor. That's another recommendation that we can also look into. And that would allow us to go out there, use our acoustic leak detector and pinpoint exactly where the leak is before it even surfaces. Because according to the study, ninety-four percent of our leaks never come to the surface, which is what we're having struggling with now.
That's what I was asking you that question because beginning to the point, we're fixing some, we go down and then it's a new one. And also, are we putting them in sleeves now? I'm in the pipe, I'm putting the pipe, we put them in sleeves now, is it a spec now?
Yes, it's in specs. Pipe that goes on the roadways.
Yes. I think we need to start looking. I'm saying that because you're doing a great job, I'm not, Chris, I think I'm on a, well, I'm sort of maybe. Okay, we need to start looking ahead of time. I mean, if two thousand eight, we were looking at putting the pipe in the sleeve, maybe we wouldn't have as much pipes that we have to replace now. So I don't want ten years from now, whoever is here, of course, I'm not here. Whoever is here, I don't think they, I hope ten years ago they had done something to help that. And that's why I want to look at outside the box and look at other recommendations that we can get, think what we can do. Like this water study, the master water study, Daniel is going to do, that's great. I hope we have done that a year ago, so two years ago. So we need to start looking into future ahead of time, not fixing it for now. That's my recommendation is, my challenge to you and myself is, the reporter, I mean, the reporter not happy with what we see and you would be really hard, you're, Lewis would be hard, you're doing a great job. It's just, we don't know what those pipes have leaked or. When the criteria changes on them, they start faster. So we need to think outside the box, that's my challenge for myself.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, this engineering report.
I'll touch on several, I'll touch on several large sewer projects that are currently on the way. In your package, it's got the notes from last night's meeting. High points, the NAC project, we're wrapping that up as we speak. That's, we got actually two sign-offs, landowner sign-offs, we're trying to finalize and get a later contractor containment and complete funding request with N R D. The existing wastewater treatment plant and pump station, we're currently decommissioning those. The contractor out there is now cleaning the basins, as well as we're removing the pump stations out of the golf course and turn those over from the official agreement to back to course. And then lastly, I want to talk to you a little bit about water service area expansion. Up here on the screen, and this, we went over this last night at the water sewer committee meeting. This is a general reminder, water and sewer service areas are like school district boundaries. They do not follow city limits. So it's an exhibit I have in front of you at the moment. What's in red is actually what you currently have on file with the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission as your water service area. This color here is Rogers Water. And then the purple color is Bentonville. And then lastly, what you'll see here on the bottom is Springville Water Utilities. As part of any expansions that we do, we actually have to prepare a report, submit that to the natural resource division that will hold a public hearing. We have to notify all the, all the water purveyors in the proximity of the city and give their comments on any expansions that we are planning. We have reached out to the, Springville is generally in agreement with what our plan is. And let me show you real quickly what, what our plan is.
Is that currently inclusive or not? That connects there?
Well.
Or is that still with Rogers?
It's still, it's still with Rogers since we haven't noted in the report that it will transition upon our connection, our service connection to that area, as well as the others that we gave up at the annexation, the annexation site. What you'll see here in yellow is what we have developed in the water sewer committee or we're planning to recommend or having discussions with our neighbors to build a better idea. Highway two sixty-four is running right through here. And then highway one twelve runs through here. This white blue line is the twelve inch water line that was installed with the sales tax bond issued that was passed several years ago. And this green line is what was the NAC sewer line, which carries our wastewater to, to NAC. So it makes sense where these areas in yellow that we continue to move further west and join up with our neighbors. Makes a lot of sense here. One challenge we have, you can see Bentonville city limits in this white gray blue color. Actually, it stems down all the way to highway two sixty-four. But you'll look at our service area, it dissects that section of their city limits. We handle our service area prior to those, uh, uh, not annexations, yeah, annexations from the, from the property owners that live in that area. So we presented this to Bentonville, we've been working on this over a year. And their response, excuse me, their response was, rather than just the water service areas, is to present a franchise agreement where we can actually service their residents within the city limits. And we have that, and Justin has it, we are reviewing that, determining which path do we need to, how do we need to move forward? And that's, that's what I'm going to ask tonight. Do you guys have a direction of which you would like us to move forward with that? Now, two things, we, we got a couple options. One, we can go ahead and submit this to N R D as we have presented here. And have to go through the public meeting and there will be comments back from our neighbors associated with that. Or we can do a combination of franchise agreement and adjust this submitted to N R D, which effectively we can remove the area here where we overlap and only ask for things outside of the city Bentonville's city limits, if you will. Now, part of this franchise agreement, there's a couple things that we would need to negotiate. Number one, any improvements that are generated in this area. If we spend our money to invest in that infrastructure, we would like any impact fees to return back to the city of the case earnings based on our current ordinances. And probably the other larger item is, at some point, they reserve the right to come in and take that infrastructure whenever they continue to build from north down to that area where they can connect to it. They would like that to revert back to the city of Bentonville, I understand. And we recommend, if that were to happen, that they would purchase that at whatever value that is at the time. So again, looking at a couple of options, if we want to move forward, as we have been working and going to present this to N R D, or a combination of what we have here today and a franchise agreement with the city of Bentonville. Should be noted that the city of Bentonville does have a franchise agreement with Centertown as well. And based on my understanding, it's worked well, I've not heard anything any different. But without, I'll open it up for questions.
I think as we discussed last night, we need to see that franchise agreement and understand it before we can make a decision between.
Well, we can, we can visit Justin and see if there's an opportunity, we can have it back at the next work session. I'm going to show you what that looks like. Now, I would anticipate this would go back and forth, negotiating back and forth between each entity as it can be approved by both government bodies.
We can get a good taste of what they're thinking, you know, before negotiations, just to see if it goes in that direction if you're ready.
Any other questions? Clear as mud? All right, the last item on engineering report, just a couple of projects to discuss of West Wild Road sidewalks. We received our hot approval, that has been advertised. Our opening bid is on the thirteenth of November at two P M. And so we'll be back for you the next city council meeting with a couple of recommendations of a, of a work contract, a contractor that extended sidewalk. And the other item on everyone's minds is the traffic signal. The poles will arrive at the contractor's yard at the end of this week. They're scheduled to begin construction next week. There's still four remaining some with sweatcoat, but that is the latest as of middle of the day today.
So there's delay in the polls, there's nothing to do, I understand what they're going to spark this month.
The polls were completed, they just have not been shipped. They have been maintained on the manufacturer's yard. That's what we've been waiting for, is to get them to the contractor. And we've been following up every few days.
What are you going to do, right?
We're pushing. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This sewer capacity study, so we have our new one complete. Is that done yet?
We have a draft that we reviewed, I guess, last month or previous month's meeting. We're making a few adjustments based on comments that we've received. For water survey meeting, we'll be ready, I would say, in the next couple of months to present to the council if y'all would like to see it in some time.
Okay, because I had some questions I met on the chat today, but I wasn't able to. I remember that, that Fluffington property that was here. They, with all these subdivisions coming in, you know, they, the number of homes that would have been like on that property, it was my understanding, we communicated that, didn't know if it could go forward unless sewer capacity study was complete. So how are we going to lose development without the sewer capacity study? Is it, could you expand upon that? Do you understand what I'm asking? Because we're approving a lot of development, but I know one development did leave because they, we didn't know if that particular land could work for the sewer system and the new lift station. So with all of these developments being approved, are, are we worried about sewer capacity? Because a lot of homes are going up.
No, they, they have been evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So what the sewer studies actually do is it's taking a holistic view of what's available in the city, what's left in the city and identifying areas for new trunk lines to go, to be installed throughout basins where, where nothing exists now. To maximize and to help us size the future capacity of the sewer. So what we don't want to do, for example, what we don't want to do is install an eight-inch sewer line in an area and develop coming in ten years down the road, and all of a sudden that eight-inch is not enough for that new development. We size it and determine that that needs to be a fifteen-inch or a larger sewer line and to potentially do a caution or has to develop or install something larger than, than needed for their development. What is going on right now with the model that we've developed, as developers do come in and ask for capacity to your current pressurized system, the step system we have, that has been modeled, and we can put that in the model to determine if that capacity exists for that size of development with the current infrastructure you have and get it to the NAC lift station. And we have used that on a couple of occasions already with, with, with developers. But depending on the property, I'll say the Allen's Bill for instance, that is one, that requirement was placed on the developer to show us, to study our system, their connection point, to ensure that there was enough capacity that we reviewed and commented and went back and forth several times to determine if they could in fact connect to that, to the system.
Okay.
So that has not stopped any of the development.
Okay.
Now, we may have, we may have told some developers that this is in process. We can't tell them what the ultimate size of a grabbing line is until it's completed at this point.
Okay.
And we have not stopped.
I think what maybe had concerned is, like someone in the neighborhood in town, that are capacity for
Yes.
the NAC hustle, are we, that's the question, where we add on that.
Oh, no, I, I think we are comfortable. Having, performing this study at this point is a good, puts, places you in a very good position. Not only that, the, the lift station that we just completed there, the lift station at NACA, it was designed based on the current size of the city of case rings with expansion potential. We're talking about this water service area that we saw. So I can't remember exactly, but we have places for two additional pumps and a lift station capacity.
You have placements?
We have placements for that. So as we grow, we will need to expand that lift station, we'll add a pump, and then we'll add another one. Now ultimately, at some point, depending, I mean, as, as far as we can plan with our crystal ball, that's all we can do, depending on densities and some of the plans that I think you'll talk about tonight, as we're looking at other densities as well, that plays a role in this. So some of our neighboring cities where they're running into challenges, infrastructure that was made fifty years ago was not based on a higher density of what we're seeing to win today. And that's where some of the struggles are becoming greater. But as far as we're concerned, I think we're planning very well.
Okay. So we're, we're good with what we currently have on the agenda, what we currently have approved and more development to come. And more comfortable with the sewer.
It should be noted, five years ago, that was not the case. Because we were, we knew that due to the growth, we were going to reach capacity with the current treatment plants and the drip fields that we had. And we had to make a decision on whether we stop growing or do we make an investment to go to NACA. And that's where you have the vision to move forward and go to NACA and plan for that. That was not the case that we were considering.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Next item, this engineering report.
Good evening, council. A couple things, obviously, we have a little franchise agreements on the agenda later. So looking forward to getting those done and, and in place. Coming up at the next work session, planning to have a draft, a few revisions to personnel handbook that we've been working on. So we have that one for you. I'll also have, it's see the water franchise agreement that we've talked about. I'll, I'll provide you with the version that was provided to us from Bentonville. And then I'll provide you also with a version with some recommended changes to it, to, to handle some of the issues that Daniel brought up. Also, some things that are in the works, as Daniel mentioned with the NACA project. Now that's commissioning, this decommissioning is happening with some of the implements over the, over the golf course. We're in a position to, to be ready to, to do that transfer. That's already been approved sometime back now, it's been a, a, a year or two of where that was approved. But there may be something where we decide, it may be a good idea to bring it back through, just to get, to make sure we're all on the same page. But essentially, we're going to be transferring to those assets. But essentially, we're going to be transferring to those assets that are remaining over to, you know, over the golf portion. And then there'll be a release of some of the easements that are there that we're getting of water, sewer easement that we need for our system. If you kind of recall all that from a couple of years ago. Lastly, oh, I had a meeting at Holland yesterday with a number of kind of project issues, things that are going on. Talked about drainage again. We're going to continue to be looking at that. I'm looking at it from a part of view of what type of changes might we need, just based on things that we've, we've encountered. So we're going to continue working on that. The agenda on that meeting was too big for us to complete in one day, so we're going to meet back and, and do that. But I, I do think that we're going to have some changes coming up on that in the next couple of months. So that's a little part of maybe, you know, maybe coming in January is just the changes and some updates that we need to do. So those are just four different things that are kind of ongoing right now. Any, any questions for me?
Thank you. Next is the Attorney's Report.
And then the Mayor's Report. That's very brief, but we are currently working with all the department heads on budgets. It's that time of year. Hope to have you a budget very quickly to be able to review that their input is on their departments. It is, it is coming from a group effort. It's being directed by the department heads. So that should be coming to y'all very soon and looking forward to preparing for next year.
Next item is a couple of comments. Any couple of comments?
I am going to ask the expect any kind of update on the drainage from letting her know that we keep kicking this can down the road. But my house was impacted by that, by that happened a hundred and twenty days ago. It does seem like we love to table things here, so I'm just curious if there's ever gone to be a resolution or a plan of action? Or if I'm also trying to be to sell my home even out of the city because I can't, no longer, you guys to do anything.
So did you hear that the Attorney and the engineer were meeting about the drainage issue?
I did hear that, but I've heard that it takes more than a day to handle it. I feel like we've never had anything to go along on. I'm just hearing about that. So I did hear about all those things, but again, I don't feel like any of this coming out of it because it's not a priority maybe, or I don't know.
Or it's a process. It takes time.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I don't think this is the first flood that anybody's wanted to experience from my knowledge.
I don't think so either. Thousands of years of floods, and that's why we have engineers to try to help figure it out. I don't know what else we can do other than rely on our engineers. Do you want to hire engineers? Do you want us to like have them do a battle royale? It's just, you, you've come and you've sworn at us before, and it's just, we're not kicking this down the road. It's an important issue to us. There's not much more that we can do. I can't come to your house and figure it out. I don't know how. I just, I literally don't know the engineering or math. So I can't figure it out. I have to outsource that opinion to our engineer. And then he's going to come with a plan that they're going to, you know, again, try and figure out. It, it isn't going to be instant, though. It's going to take time.
I'm right. It's going to be instant. I don't think anybody is, but I'm going to try to first with Hannah here and ask when something is going to happen. And I'm not directly targeting you or anyone on the city council here. I'm just saying, every time I come to this meeting, it's going to be quick, okay, we're talking about this later. I don't have a solution. And that's fine if it takes time, but I think over time, there should be some sort of update that we can expect, like we were in meeting, like what's coming out of that. I've been arguing that before. I couldn't simply just continue to just, you know, the roller. I mean, listening to Debbie, like, financial reports are being tabled, like, I mean, what are we supposed to expect? I'm not arguing you. And yeah, I did come in here and say that it seems like things are a shit show because to be honest, it does. Every time I come in, the mayor looks around at everybody else, like who's, where does the butt stop? Like, who is the one responsible for any of this?
Ma'am, I have asked our engineer multiple times about your stuff, and he is looking into it. Your situation is a little complicated. You, you bought a home in a place that didn't have curbside cutouts. I personally come after you spoke and another person in your neighborhood came down and looked, actually, it was before you spoke, because you were surprised to see your pictures up there, because I cared so much. I asked our engineer to do it. I said, could you please look at this home on the corner across from the detention pond? So I have asked for updates. There is a process. But your situation is, is very unique. And, and he has looked into it. I have, we, we have updated it. If we, if we constantly, I mean, he has to do his job. I, I did my job as a council member. I thought we came down and asked him to look at your particular property, which you questioned, why was my house up there? I said, well, I asked him to look because I saw your damage. So the council members do care.
I had a house before, and it didn't matter. And once again, like, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to blame anybody because it's just not where we get, we don't need any of this, and this is what happens, right? I'm just saying, I have come here since that flood happened and hoping that you guys are working on a resolution. If you say you are, I can totally trust you and assume that you are and come back next month and hopefully hear something different. But I'm not confident that that's the case because I've been here a few times and nothing has changed. But I come here in meetings and started by arguing amongst everybody here in this room, how do I know? Because I don't trust that you guys are running for the city the way it should be run. I mean, we didn't have insurance on our police vehicles, and they couldn't drive for a day. We're supposed to follow the law in this city, but you can't even guarantee people to be able to monitor the streets for us. So I'm not, again, not here to explain, just simply saying, like, I'm a homeowner in this city. If I care about the city, I would quite get if something were to come out of this eventually. And maybe like a timeline, like, in a month, we'll let you know who we step to or something, and not just, you know.
We've already been letting you know. We, we have a plethora of engineers working. I mean, again, I, I just, I, I don't, you say, I'm not coming in just, but that's exactly what you're doing. You, you've come down to two meetings, you've sworn, you've not been particularly polite. You know, we, we are essentially, all six of us, except for the mayor, we are essentially volunteers. We do not, I mean, the amount that we get paid is, is like a per diem. We, we are all volunteers in this capacity. We all have full-time jobs and children and lives. Our full-time job is not, oh, my gosh, you know, citizens having a drainage problem. I'm going to have to put everything on hold and, and this is, we have to rely on the experts. I mean, that's what we have to do. What is the alternative? That's my question. What is the alternative?
I'm not letting you. I'm not letting any of you. This is the experts that are discussing your solutions. I'm just asking when we need expertise. Is that a bad thing for me to ask? Try and not come here and have my own, like, time with your guys to say, like, I'm concerned about my home. And it wasn't just my family that lived up in NACA. There were several of them. And I'm sure they will all be happy to come here and share their stories, but it's not me who's obviously upsetting everybody. And I'm probably a time.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I was going to say there, we're kind of in a back and forth, and that's usually what we don't do. But I, I was going to say something just to maybe be told. You have a very particular problem. It's a very complex problem. It's a problem that, that is very challenging to, to solve. What I, my recommend is, it, it doesn't lend itself to solving at a public comment period. This is really a period where people kind of, and, and have a comment and just want to let the council know. What I might suggest is that, if we do this happen immediately, it's like connecting with somebody up at the city that you can come and have a sit-down with and a discussion, where you give some updates and things like that. It may seem like you're not getting an update, or there are, there's quite a bit happening with, with limited resources and things that, you know, gravity only goes one way, and, and there's some big challenges there. And I think it may leave the impression that nothing is happening. So if, if you want to, after the meeting, I'll come talk to you, and maybe I'll come do it with somebody. So I think this is more of a, you probably need to come into city hall and have a sit-down with somebody there and kind of share your concerns, give you feedback, and then kind of have that interaction because it really doesn't lend itself well here.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do. I have concerns that the city is not being managed well. And it's not based on my particular issue that I have, but it's based on the minutes that I see, the reports that are coming up here, and how I see that nobody seems to take ownership of the things that are happening in our city. That's my comment. It's not any of anybody in particular. I'm just saying I have concerns about that. And as it says in the city, I would hope that those concerns are addressed eventually, but I don't have comments.
My name is Trudy, one more time. Ma'am, can I get your name?
L E T I S H A. I wouldn't hear what it is.
And I do want to make a statement as well. As we mentioned a few minutes ago, we went down this week and sat down and discussed a whole host of issues. We are working on a number of different drainage issues. We're working on a number of different issues as a city, from streets to growth to drainage to expansion of water and sewer and development. And those are all things that we do. They do require experts. And we have experts engaged and we address those items. I've got a three-page list that I work off of every day, and things come on, things go off, and things are taken care of. Those are my responsibility. I take care of those responsibilities. It doesn't always happen quickly, and some things happen more quickly than others. But that is where we are right now, and that is the process that's not always. So the next item on the agenda, or do we have any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I appreciate it. Just to get a moment to introduce myself, I'm Mike Armstrong. I'm running for family court judge. I've been practicing law here for about twenty years in, in northwest Arkansas, last fifteen, doing family law. And mentioned dealing with issues in the city. And I think that a lot of the citizens have probably had issues with the courts here in Benton County. And I'd love to be able to visit with any of you today about that, find out what kind of judge you're looking for in Cape Springs and in Benton County. I've been doing this for, like I said, about twenty years, fifteen years of domestic relations work. I've got all that experience that I bring to the table. I think the most important aspect of, of a family court job is families in dealing with that. And I always had another visit with anybody about that. I hope to earn your trust and your support and vote on March 11th. It's Mike Armstrong. So thank you.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is deal with business, and that's ordinance adopting the master street plan. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading? Got a motion by JJ. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
City Case Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, ordinance adopting the master street plan and future ladies map for the city of Case Springs, Arkansas.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by JJ. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC. Any discussion?
Yes. David? I'm looking at this information you gave us that came with the city council report.
Yes, sir.
It says, mixed-use neighborhood categories along Route sixty-four East Normal Avenue will change to mixed corridor. What is it?
It's basically just a nomenclature change based on the downtown master plan and all that work we've done.
Does that change when we can go in those areas?
Essentially, no.
Essentially, no.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, it's, it's just a nomenclature change. So what is it? Mixed-use corridor? That's what it's changing to, correct?
Yeah.
So mixed-use corridor. I'm going to try and abbreviate this just a little bit because there's a little bit in here. So mixed-use corridor also, with wide spectrum uses encourages all housing types from single-family to multi-family. It recognizes the existence of some strip and martial, a wide industrial use within these areas. Mixed-use corridor encourages mixed-use development that better responds to multi-modal needs. Places of majority parking on the side of your developments that enhance your aesthetics, case for your architecture, size, and size of all landscape improvements.
And light industrial?
It has light industrial in there, but it would still have to be zoned, factual, allowed for light industrial. And the only place we actually can show the light industrial is down there, yes, yeah. But it's still, for something like that to be allowed, we have to consider that. And, and, well, again, you know, as we transition into the zoning code, you know, like, we have to encompass or kind of create those categories, right? Light industrial, like, currently, we don't have a light industrial category. So if someone right now came to us and said, I want to do this, and they called it light industrial, well, we don't have a light industrial technical category. So we would have to, once we work on that, kind of create that and then create what's allowed in light industrial. Typically, light industrial would be regarded as allowing something like storage, light manufacturing, things like that, not, like, not heavy industry essentially, you know, is allowed in light industrial. It's, it's, it's something that cities have put in place kind of on the corridors to encourage some of the moderate uses.
David, can I just pick up on there? I, I may have misheard the sentence you was reading from there. I just, on mixed-use corridor, dereklin, barter, I just wanted to mention that within that pink color, that light pink color, it actually says, that, that it does not encourage light industrial.
I didn't read far.
Any storage facilities are not compatible within, and you see other light industrial items. And so those would be, of course, you dial it in with your zoning map, but this resource is suggesting that light industrial items would go into that light industrial category. It's actually on the map, which is not what we're introducing.
I don't know how to express this, so I'm just spitting it out, which I can't be good at. My concern is that nomenclature, this is a future land map, but once it's, if it's passed tonight, it immediately goes into use. So it's not a future land map, land use map. It's a current or will be current.
It's going to be adopted, but it's to guide the future development of the city. It's not something, you know, just because.
I understand. I understand. It's a guide. But I was here when you first hired on, and we had the discussion about temporary with the RV park. And the explanation that the city captain, the planning commissioner, used was that fit, that expansion fit because it meant a criteria for park and a method criteria for recreation. And therefore, an RV park fit in that. I still can't wrap my mind of why a RV park meant a park and then recreation. Yeah, there's a golf course there, but that has to vary on the RV park. And I'm concerned that our planning commissioner still operates that way. That's my concern with all of this. We are becoming, or seem to be trying to become Rogers or Bentonville in the way we're expanding. Now, everybody has a right to sell their land. Don't get me wrong. But with all these shoes, we're going to start putting up against everybody else, and eventually, we're going to run out of space.
Yes, sir.
Am I not correct?
Well, on the RV park side of it, if I'm not mistaken, in zoning, RV parks are allowed commercial zoning. So if someone goes down the highway, how is it, is it commercial, like, it's allowed? So that is something that happens in zoning. So once we get into the zoning code, which, you know, hopefully, by beginning of next year, we'll have something, we'll be back here doing the discussions again, we'll have in the zoning code more stringent rules on things like RV parks, things like that. Because if I'm not mistaken, RV parks are allowed by rock in commercial zoning. Because if I'm not mistaken, RV parks are allowed by right in commercial zones. And that piece of land along the highway, someone was re-zoned to commercial, and it's allowed by right. And there's no, I mean, there's, there's nothing that we have to stop it, essentially, that way. You know, that, that, and again, that's, that's zoning on future land use.
I'm, I'm not, I went against the expansion of it. It's the way it was done that bothered me, saying it met the criteria for park and met the criteria for, uh, recreation. I mean, again, you get into norman plager, yes, but... I'm not a trusting person, so...
One, one thing I might add, or to, I, I do appreciate that comment about running out of space and, um, and development happening all around N.W.A., and Cape Springs is not immune to that. Um, and so, one thing that I do appreciate about the direction that the cities go with this map and the planning commission, from that downtown plan like they've mentioned, um, the map is encouraging mixed uses and more density within the downtown area. And I don't think that is, um, I mean, that is very much in line with the, the history of the downtown of this community. And so, for that, we can encourage, um, with the mixed uses and, and density in the downtown area, we can save more land, you know, outside of that.
The CPZD is good, saying, do that also, and it doesn't have to be in the downtown area. Because of violating church...
Yes.
We're putting in many, uh...
Well, we also don't want, we don't want to move forward having a PCD all the time.
I agree with that.
And so that, that, that goes back to the zoning code update, where we're trying to incorporate, where people don't have to, um, clog for PCD, and we allow some of those things by law. But I, I fully understand we're coming from South Town, and there, there's numerous things that, once we get to the zoning code, we're going to have to find, and then tone down. Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, I just encourage you to get the zoning code done as soon as you can, because we've, I've been asking for that. We get, like, void payment, and I'd really like to see that, because we get the supplement in downtown Master Plan. Now we got it. Let's start working on those zoning codes, because when we do PCD, it's okay. But as you said it, and I agree with it, PCD is not gonna resolve our issues. I mean, it's a good thing for now, but we really need to get the zoning code updated and created, basically.
Uh, uh, we're, and we're continuing to work on it now that, you know, we've got some of this other stuff on.
Will you get that done faster if we don't have to talk about this future land map a hundred times?
I mean, we can focus on a little bit, you know, a little bit, what you're...
Yeah, I figured.
Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Roll call.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Oh.
Okay, that passed for one.
Mayor, there is a first class. You want, there are some emergency clauses?
Uh, next item, I propose a motion to approve the emergency clause. So, we got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second? Second. Second by, uh, M.C. And roll call.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
M.C.?
Yes.
And what was the number on this?
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Thank you. Next item is a resolution to offer us, Mayor, to negotiate a contract with HFTG for website. Do I hear a motion to approve? Some... A motion by, uh, J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M.C. Any discussion? Please update that website. That's the only session we have. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. And that was approved.
What's on? Who was that?
Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend in its entirety the, uh, franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy. Do I hear a motion to approve? So... Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion by M.C., second by J.J., uh, roll call.
Mayor, you're gonna have to wait for the approval.
Yes, I'm sorry. Motion to, uh, suspend the rules and place this on third reading on that title. So... A motion by J.J., and a second by M.C. Okay, now roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
This ordinance twenty-two, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. For December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two, City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, an ordinance to amend in its entirety, ordinance number ninety-eight, granting Black Hills Energy in, for its successors, to ride privilege and grant, and franchise to construct, maintain, and operate natural gas systems and light gas mains along and over, across, and under streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways, and other public places for the purpose of distributing and selling natural gas, providing for the regulation of the funding of said gas system and system, repealing all ordinance in conflict thereof, providing for emergency clauses for emergencies.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve? So... Motion by J.J., second, second by M.C., roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause? So... A motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Uh, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Next item on the agenda is ordinance for the franchise fee for Bright Speed. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading by that one? Got a motion by J.J.? Thank you. Second by, uh, M.C. Roll call.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
For December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-three, City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, ordinance granting franchise to Bright Speed and Northwest Arkansas LLC, FKA, and retail, uh, Northwest Arkansas LLC, in the capital itself, and its cooperating affiliates, Bright Speed, operating to maintain a telecommunications system, the system in the, in the city of Cape Springs, Arkansas. The city declaring emergency for the purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Some... Got a motion by J.J.?
Second.
Second by M.C. Roll call.
J.J.?
I guess.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. And do I hear a motion to approve the, the emergency clause? So... Motion by J.J.?
Second.
Second by...
Mike?
Uh, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark? M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
All right, that was approved. The next item is item, uh... The Carroll Electric Franchise Agreement. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Twenty-four, for December two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-four, City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, ordinance to amend in its entirety, ordinance number one hundred, granting Carroll Electric, for its successors, to ride privilege and franchise, construct, maintain, and operate, like, our distribution, uh, system and, uh, to electric lines and related equipment, along, over, across, and under streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways, and other public ways, for the purpose of distributing and selling electric power, providing for the regulation of the conduct and set of like distribution system, repealing all ordinance in conflict thereof, providing for emergency clauses for emergencies.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So... Got a motion by J.J. Second. Next, second by M.C. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
So...
Got a motion by Erica? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor, I mean, uh, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
All right, that was approved. Next item is the franchise agreement with Southwestern Electric Power. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third reading? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
J.J.? Mike?
Mark.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
As you just said. I think we're on twenty-five. For December two thousand, uh, dash twenty-five, City of Cape Springs, Arkansas, an ordinance granting to Southwestern Electric Company, successors of its signs, and now exclusive franchise to construct, maintain, and operate lines, and appliances, and appliances for conventional electricity in, in, or through streets, avenues, alleys, and public places in the City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, declaring emergency for emergencies.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Uh, roll call.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
That was approved. And do I hear a motion to, uh, pass the emergency clause? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Roll call.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
That was approved. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to rezone approximately twenty-five point five acres on Ford Lane. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading on that one? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Second by M.C. Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
For December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six, City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, twenty-three seven five twenty-five point five acres. There's a real property located at five seventy-nine Ford Lane, from April thirty-one, to see what they want residential art for the City of Cape Springs, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So... Got a motion by J.J.? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M.C. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, David, you said, ask questions at this point. Um, how, this would be the most residentially dense area in all of Cape Springs, then, if this goes out as R3. We have Hillcrest, we have On Brown, we have Brentwood, we have Bridgewood, and we have the Weir's property. Would that be a correct assumption, considering it already was with Hillcrest, um, when they started moving in?
I mean, yes, until we have other developments in other areas possible. There's gonna be other subsidies that come in, and we can be other growth, and...
Okay. My concern with this property, um, is drainage. We saw what happened with Hillcrest. And, um, I, I think it is extremely dense on that side of town. And, um, I know they went down to, to an R3, and I know it came approved from planning commission, but I honestly do not think it's in the best interest of the city. That's my opinion. And I'm a little bit scared.
Any further discussion? And you keep that, how much you said?
Well, now...
And the applicant, was that what the applicant's here?
Oh, well, yeah, that was on the, the, I mean, that was, I mean, that was, um...
The Taylor Living and Crafting Co. and Associates, I appreciate your time tonight. Uh, regarding drainage, drainage specifically, uh, will be required to meet all of the, um, engineering requirements and drainage requirements, so forth, by the City of Cape Springs, and the State of Arkansas. Uh, I'm licensed by the state engineer state, and required to meet the requirements for, um, you know, public health safety and welfare. Uh, so we'll, we'll design appropriately, and we'll be able to do our maintenance furthermore to the west of us, of the cash dripping. Uh, so we'll, we'll be able to control it with the potential panel on our side, and release, uh, and meet the progress as required. Uh, regarding density specifically, the median density designation was allowed under the previous future land use map, uh, in spring, they allowed it in the new one, when it was adopted here tonight. Uh, so nothing changed in the area, and the R3 that we're requesting falls under that median density requirement. We're capping our unit count around ninety lots of less than forty units per acre on this side. It would be less than, some concerning in their neighborhoods. Uh, but matching the zoning in the neighborhood, I mean, Brentwood to the north of Hillcrest, and Hillcrest is obviously a high density, that is something that we're proposing. So, I'm available for any other questions about that.
So your zoning is less than Hillcrest?
That's correct. Thank you, if that helps you. And now, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I still have concerns, because Hillcrest was, met the drainage requirements, and we saw a problem with drainage, so...
Roll call.
M.C.?
Yes.
J.J.?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Erica?
No.
Mike?
Out of touch.
No.
Okay. If, uh... So, that was the last thing on our agenda. Is there any further about the agenda? Council, actions, or do I hear a motion to approve?
I want to share with the council that, um, coax communication came out and filled the six-foot hole in my backyard. That it's supposed to coax communication lines, you know, the flight.
Good. You know, that took a while.
You actually got cops to do something, it's amazing.
That took a while, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, and have a good day.
I have most motions tied, so I can...
Always.
That's why I...